Did you go get it, or someone went for you?
Good evening. Buenas noches. Tonight, we have a full school board meeting, but first, let's have one of our DSAC students, who is also a student body president of J Hugh Middle School, Nirvana Moreno. Please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated. Thank you, President Montes.
Thank you. Do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes. The Board of Education's accepted the administrative appointment of Christina Hernandez as Assistant Principal Garcia Elementary School. Effective date to be determined. The roll call board was five zero. In closed session, the board took actions to issue notice to employee number 1-875-235 that he or she shall not be re-employed for the 2015-2016 school year. The roll call board was five zero. Next, in closed session, the board took action to issue notices to two employees, and I will read the board a separate employee ID number. First employee ID number 1-553-235. The roll call board was three two, and I'm going to read the which yes or no. President Montes was no. Mrs. O'Callie, Nancy G. O'Callie, Vice President, yes. Dina Walker, Clark, no. Joseph Ayala, member, yes. Joseph W. Martinez, member, yes. Next, employee ID number 1-381025. The roll call board was five zero. These two employees, they may be released from the administrative positions and reassigned to another certified administrative positions, classroom teaching position, or other non-management certificate position for the 2015-2016 school year. Or that their work year end or all salary may be reduced for the 2015-2016 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, interim superintendent, Mr. Mohamed Islam. Next, we need to adjourn closed session. Do we have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, closed session closed. Okay, we'll be, um, we'll be starting a regular open session now, and I just would like to introduce our student board member here tonight, Ms. Angulo. We have our school board member, Mr. Joseph Martinez, present. We have a school board member, Mr. Joe Ayala, present. We have, to my left, we have school board clerk, Ms. Walker, present. And Ms. Vice President, Nancy G. O'Callie. And I am your president, Edgar Montes. So with that, we'll go ahead and begin. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, do we have any discussion? Or any items that anyone would like to pull? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll go ahead and continue to, um, agenda item B presentations. And we'll start with, um, Ms. Angulo, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Today, our first presenter is Celestino Luis from Cole Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Tino, and I am the Vice President of Cole Middle School's ASB. I'm also the one and only captain of Cole Middle School's JROTC, and I have come here to tell you all the amazing things that is happening at the mighty home of the Cougars. First, Cole Middle School just held our second quarter awards ceremony, and it was great. We had over ten students with a 4.0 GPA, that's straight A's. Also, we had even more on principal's honor roll and on regular honor roll. So it's a spirit of doing one more thing, one more time. Also, our girls and boys basketball team went to the playoffs today, and they won, and now we're headed for championships. Good job, Cougars. Oh, and Cole will be hosting soon a STEM Saturday soon. All students from Cole and even the elementary schools can come on down and see how the Cougars rock in STEM and science. Also, one final thing, I'd like to give credit to my partner in crime. Just kidding, we're just partners. She couldn't come tonight, but she's the president of Cole Middle School's ASB. Her name is Jenna Patton, and me and her have been working together to plan a field trip for forty-five eighth graders to attend to Riley's Farm to learn about the Civil War. So I also want to give big thanks to our principal, Carolyn Idy, and Cindy Lepore for helping me and Jenna make this field trip idea become a reality. So we're going to schedule this field trip for the, towards the end of April, beginning of May, sometime between there. And forty-five eighth graders will come and learn more about the Civil War. Well, thanks for, thanks, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. Until we meet again, this is Tino signing off. Good night, Rialto.
Our next presenter is Nirvana Moreno from J Hugh Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Nirvana Moreno, the ASB president at J Hugh Middle School. Our royalty dance is the last dance of the year, and many eighth graders are looking forward to being crowned king or queen on April 22nd. The dance will be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Our open house was a great success. Plenty of parents came to see how well their kids were doing. Many clubs sold food and drinks to fundraise for their activities. ASB went down to Garcia Elementary this past Friday to reach a different classes in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday. Jiggy, our school mascot, was ambushed by little first graders that were excited to finally meet him. They will be waiting again next year for a return. We will be having our sports day to honor opening day for the amazing sport of baseball. We would like to invite you all to come and show off your team spirit. We will be waiting to see which of you like the Dodgers or the Angels. J Hugh is very proud to announce that, drumroll please, once again, one of our own will soon become a TV star. Our teacher, Kida Kashuagi, is going to be competing on the hit TV show American Ninja Warrior. We invite everyone to come out and support our Science Ninja on Friday night and possibly Saturday morning at Venice Beach. Thank you and good night.
Our next speaker is Maya Smith from Frisbee Middle School.
Good evening, parents and guardians, members of the board, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, community members. My name is Maya Smith, and this is the ASB report of the month of February and March for Frisbee Middle School. This month was a very busy month in us planning our third annual Career in College Day. We at Frisbee make this a school-wide event with over sixty professionals on campus to speak and lecture about careers that we can start looking into. Another component we've added into our career day is a presentation from our Avid students. Avid students researched careers in colleges and presented them as a college walkthrough. The Career in College Day has been a great success the past three years. Every year, we learn what works for us and hope next year's event is even bigger. We are also in the process of getting ready for our eighth grade activities. We are excited about preparing for our annual eighth grade dance. We can't reveal any more information because it's top secret. But it's going to be an amazing event. That's all for today. Thank you for listening.
Our final speaker is Annalisa Valenzuela from Rialto Middle School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, superintendent, Mr. Islam, and our viewing audience. My name is Annalisa Valenzuela, and I am proud to represent Rialto Middle School as the ASB president. It is a pleasure to be here tonight and share all the events of our school. Us Tigers have been very busy last month with many projects. Last month, we hosted the district science fair, and although we did not take home the trophy, we are proud of Alexander Hickerson, who won the Sweepstakes Award. On February 25th, we held our third annual Take Your Parent to School Day. On this day, we invited our parents to walk a mile in our shoes. Okay, so it wasn't a mile, but they did spend the day shadowing us in our classes. Over two hundred fifty parents were caught doing math, taking notes, and quizzes. We had a BBQ chicken lunch expertly prepared by Nutrition Services and some lunchtime dancing as we brought our resident ASB DJ. It was a great day. Last week, on March 5th, we had our ASB RMS Open House Night. This time, parents got to be parents. We opened our campus and classrooms to everyone in the family to check out our school. The internet bus came and set up their South Rialto location, and the parents fed us good. Four hundred fifty burgers later, we celebrated another successful family night as Tigers. On Read Across America Night, the RMS Builders Club took to the streets and walked over to our neighbors at Warner Elementary. Dressed as the Cat in the Hat and Things One and Two, they read in small groups to all one hundred eighty first graders. Thanks to the Rialto Education Association grant, they were able to purchase enough books to give every student in their group a book to take home. The I Am Going to College project found two hundred of our student sixth graders on Redlands University campus last Friday, with the remaining sixth graders going this week to check out what colleges I really like. Our seventh graders and eighth graders will be traveling to USC and UCLA next month to open their eyes and minds to what college choices they have. I thank you for allowing me this time to share our campus events with you. Have a great spring break, relax, and enjoy your time with friends and family, because when we return, it will be fourth semester and testing season.
This would conclude the middle school DSAC presentation.
Let's give one more round of applause to all the student DSAC. Thank you, Ms. Angulo. Next, we'll go on to public comments, agenda item C at this time, comments from the floor. Any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. And we have Mr. Russell Silva.
Good evening, board members, administration, viewing audience. My name is Russell Silva. Laurie Anderson, performing artist, composer, and magician, musician, said, "Performing art is about joy. It's about making beauty out of something that is so full of any kind of wild joy that you really can't put words to it. And it's that joy that is in the soul of the performing artist. And it's that joy that those people that could not make it to the ritz this following weekend, they miss that joy." To sing and to dance and the poetic inspiration that our students, the children ranging in ages from eighteen to seven years old, these performers put joy back into the day in words that we could not use. This board, this district, needs to take a genuine and compassionate look into the possibility of expanding our Performing Arts Division to all school sites and to give the youth, our future stars, a place to shine. And so that they could follow in the footsteps of some of our great notable Eisenhower alumnis, such as Clarence Gilliard, a television actor who was on Matlock and Walker, Texas Ranger. Kurt Fogg, who's an actor, a writer, a singer, and a director, and who hosted the Nickelodeon's Ladies of the Hidden Temple. Wilson Cruz, also a television actor, who was on My So-Called Life and Sister Sister. As well as famous John Singleton, we all know as a scriptwriter or a screenwriter, producer, director of the movies Boys in the Hood and Poetic Justice. This district needs to allow the students to expand their minds and broaden their opportunities for success, not just in the business world, but in the arts as well. Paul Ostergaard, Vice President of City Corp., said, "A broad education in the arts helps children better understand their world." We need students who are culturally literate as well as math and science literate. The arts also brings people together from all ages, religious faiths, and nationalities, united for one cause, one single cause, to dance, to laugh, to create, to dream, to believe, and to perform. David Rubenstein, the financier and philosopher and philanthropist and current chairman of the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, said, "The world is a complicated place, and there's a lot of division between people. Performing arts tends to unite people in a way that nothing else does. So consider expanding the arts program in the Rialto Unified School District. Because when your passion is ignited, your future is brightened, and your dreams become reality. Whether it's through dance, or singing, or acting, it's all about more than just steps, your voice, and your performance. It's about life lessons." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Next up, we have Mr. Michael Cervantes.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Michael Cervantes. I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Norma Torres just to present some information about our 2015 Congressional Art Competition. Each spring, the Congressional Institute sponsors a nationwide high school visual art competition to recognize and encourage artistic talent throughout the nation. Since the competition began in 1982, more than six hundred and fifty thousand students have participated in this competition. This year, Congresswoman Torres has the opportunity to select a winner from the thirty-fifth congressional district, which includes the city of Rialto. The culmination of the competition will be a year-long display in the Cannon Building in Washington, DC, and the winner will be flown to Washington, DC as well with a guest to go ahead and visit their artwork. So it's a great opportunity for any student. You don't have to be an art student. You can be just any high school student and participate. There's no fee. And so we just wanted to present this information and let you know that the cutoff date to enter the competition will be five o'clock Monday, March 23rd. And you can go on our website, torres.house.gov, www.torres.house.gov for more information. I have some flyers I'm going to leave in the lobby for anybody who's interested. So hopefully, some students will participate, and we like to get, you know, all our cities to be involved in this competition. So thank you.
Thank you. And just to piggyback, I believe the district received an email from Congressman Norma Torres's office regarding that art competition. Let's make sure every, all the principals and all the school sites get that email in case any students do want to participate.
Sure.
Next up, Mr. Blaze Ray? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Blaze Ray, and I'm here as a representative from Eisenhower High School. I'd like to apologize for my lack of materials. If you would like them later, I can give you my email and send them out to you.
Could you bring the microphone down just a little bit?
Sorry about that. I'm here today because the Eisenhower students were presented with a survey at fourth period. After expressing concern about the survey, I talked to Administrator Jerry Sermer, and he said that the cause of the survey was that the district had expressed concern about the declining number of purchased school lunches. He said that the district feels that the matter is due to the singular current, to the current singular lunch period Eisenhower offers. After interviewing staff and students, everyone felt that it was important that we maintain the singular lunch period rather than move into a dual lunch period. As the flyers I handed out were the reasoning for this and quotes from different staff and students that felt equally concerned on the matter. One of the reasons that, that, excuse me, one of the reasons that concern was expressed was because the majority of clubs on campus are held at lunchtime. If we move into a dual lunch program, it eliminates the meeting, it eliminates the meeting time for these clubs, takes out the number of members, and also creates chaos within the club, being that some of the cabinet members and the advisors would be in separate lunch periods. The teachers also felt, in addition to this, that it would eliminate time for student-teacher interaction and also tutoring time that is well needed by the students. Faculty member Diane Carter, so that she feels that the, she feels that the declining number of purchased lunches is not due to the singular lunch program, but rather than, but rather than that, the actual food at the school. She has seen spoiled yogurt, fuzzy fruits and vegetables, and it sort of claims to students who eat the food that it isn't fresh and it isn't cooked. Student, senior Edgar Vargas said that it would be better to elongate the singular lunch than go into the two lunch. That way, it would not spoil the extracurricular activities. There was a lot of expressed concern today by staff and students, and we feel that the separation of the lunches would cause more truancies and also cost the district more money due to those truancies. We ask that the board please consider the, consider the decision a lot before they make their decision, because we do not want, we do not want the additional chaos that comes along with the dual lunch program. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Next, we have Mrs. Celia Salaya.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva.
Good evening, members of the board, directors.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches, Mr. Islam. Superintendente interino, Mr. Islam, y audiencia. Soy Celia Salaya.
My name is Celia Salaya.
Coordinadora de Amigos Unidos, Grupo de Apoyo. Grupo de Apoyo para Padres de Niños Especiales. Queremos agradecer a Mr. Islam. Porque los niños especiales de la Carter High School ya no están recogiendo basura ni reciclando. También queremos expresar nuestro agradecimiento a Mr. Ayala y a Mr. Montes por su apoyo. Reiteramos nuestro apoyo a la señora del Río. Directora de Educación Especial. Por el buen trabajo que está haciendo. Por sus conocimientos académicos en el ramo de la educación especial. Entendemos que todavía hay mucho por hacer en educación especial. Pues recordamos que fueron alrededor de ciento cincuenta las recomendaciones de Figma. Y por eso es que estamos pidiendo su apoyo a la señora del Río. Proviéndole todos los recursos y la ayuda necesaria para la educación especial. En nuestro distrito, para que nuestro distrito tenga éxito. Gracias por su apoyo a la educación. Y nosotros también continuaremos apoyando a nuestro distrito y a nuestra mesa directiva. Gracias.
Thank you, gracias, Mrs. Salaya. That concludes public comment. At this time, would anybody else like to come forward for public comment before we close public comment? Um, I, I apologize. I only have slips for items not on the agenda. Does anybody have any comment for items on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Then we'll go ahead and go on to item three, C three, comments from association executive board members. The Rialto Education Association, would you like to take the floor?
Good evening, school board, interim superintendent, Mohamed Islam, community members, TV watchers. My name is Lisa Lindberg, president of the Rialto Education Association. I have just a couple of things tonight. First of all, I would like to give my thanks and great gratitude to Moira Borja in Fiscal Services. We had a little mix-up last month with some of our teachers who teach a one-sixth, and for some reason, the paperwork didn't get to Personnel Services and then it didn't get to Departments. Anyway, that happens. And she made sure they got paid mid-month. They were supposed to be paid February 1st, and she really worked with everyone to make sure they were paid mid-month. And the teachers appreciated it. I know I did, and I just think she did a fantastic job. The other thing I have is, one of the things you have on your agenda, I noticed that you had already approved, and it's on here again tonight, is something about Casey Elementary on page five. You approved that at the last board meeting. And the reason I know is because a friend of mine is back there with her youngsters, and they're running around, they're little two-year-olds, and I asked her why she was here. And she's here in case there are any questions about this field trip. But it was, I told her, I said it was already approved at the last board meeting. So I just want to point that out. I don't know why it was, it's on here again. It's, and I looked, it's the exact same wording. So I, I just wanted to point that out. And then my third thing is, there were two community LCAP meetings last week, and unfortunately, the one at Cole was very poorly attended. The one at Morris was a little better attended. But I think that if perhaps, and this came from a teacher who lives in our district, she thought that maybe if it was in the Rialto record, that there was going to be a meeting, you'd get more of a turnout from parents. I've noticed in different school districts that they put it up on the marquees, that there's going to be an LCAP meeting, and then you have more people coming. I just don't think there was enough notice for parents. I think there would have been more turnout and maybe more time for them to talk about what they wanted. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lindberg. Next up, we have California School Employees Association. Do we have any representatives? Anybody else from CSCI?
I have three minutes, okay. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Islam and other administrators and audience. I do want to say that, that we did, I'm on the RITS Committee, which is a really great group of people that volunteer our time to put that event on. And we work together so well as a team. But I guess really where I would like to put some emphasis on is the classified staff that work behind the scenes. We've got the lighting guy, we've got the sound guy, we have the custodians that help us set everything up ahead of time, we have the custodians that clean up after the event. And, you know, they put in a lot of time, yes, they do get paid for it, but it's long days for them and it's long hours and it's above and beyond their call of duty. And I really think that we should acknowledge them in that, in that aspect. And to Sayeda Jaffrey for doing the great job that she does and pulling it all together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Do we have anybody present tonight from Communication Workers of America that would like to comment?
I also was at the Putting on the RITS, and I agree with Mr. Silva that it has to do a lot of things. I was amazed at the talent that I saw, and especially from Ms. O'Kelly. But I also attended along with Heather, the LCAP meeting at Morris, and we learned a few things. But I got to tell you one thing, I brought my grandson to Putting on the RITS, and I was really, it was great seeing the mothers get to dance with their sons. And then a little later on, that little girl from first grade that sang Ariana Rodriguez, I was blown away. And then...
Yeah, it's beautiful.
It was. And then Aiden Lowe in doing the poetry. I actually expected him to go a little longer than he did, but he didn't. But when we left, we were walking out, and I didn't think I'd won anything. I looked at my phone and I had no text message, but I had been on four items. So we left going along, and this little guy, Isaac Espinoza, he was the one that was in the motorcycle jacket.
Cruising for bruising.
He comes up to us and looks at my grandson and says, "You want my autograph?" My grandson gives him the program and he signed it.
Oh, God!
And, and I'll just close with one thing. I know that we've already sunshine our proposals and you've sunshine yours back, but on the RITS, I won, I won. I consider it winning when you have a winning bid. I got something that I'm going to be happy to learn to do. I won the knitting basket.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. We go on next to item D on tonight's agenda, public hearing. We'll go ahead and take a, would anybody like to motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any person wishing to speak on items on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. First item is public hearing pursuant to the requirements of governmental code and board policy. The initial 2015 through 2016 proposal submitted by the Rialto Education Association for an agreement between REA, Board of Education, and the Rialto Unified School District is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Do we have anybody that would like to comment regarding the first item under public hearing? Is it for CWA?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a question that I have. As I said, my name is Ron Fletcher, and I'm just a public person right now, but looking at this proposal, I see high school counselors and middle school counselors. What happened to grade school counselors? Do you have them in this district? Because I know that I have fought hard in San Bernardino to get a counselor in each school. And I, because I have a daughter-in-law who's a counselor, and she was handling a couple of elementary schools. And so I really highly recommend you guys looking into getting a counselor, at least having one that shared between two schools, which is not a great idea, but it's better than none. That's my only observation.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on the first item under public hearing? Seeing that there's none, we'll go on to item two, public hearing pursuant to the requirements of governmental code and board policy. The initial contract full proposal for the 2015 through 18 school years submitted by the Rialto Unified School District for an agreement between the Communication Workers of America, Board of Education, and the Rialto Unified School District is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Do we have anyone that would like to comment on the second item? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly, Mr. Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar items, all items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education, members, or the interim superintendent for individual action. Do, do we have a preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Angulo. Do we have a motion by members of the board to approve this item?
So moved.
These items? Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do we have a discussion regarding any items E through J?
I do six, seven, and nine. I mean, I'm sorry, G, six, seven, and nine.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Okay, so with that, if it's okay with the board, we can approve all other items if there's no discussion regarding the other items or questions. And then separately, vote on six, seven, G, six, seven, and nine. Do we have a motion to approve all items except for six, seven, and nine, E through J?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala, second?
Walker and Mama second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So items E through J except for G, six, seven, and nine have just been approved. Five oh vote. Onto G six. Would you like to read the item, Ms. O'Kelly?
Well, it's approved Eisenhower High School, Future Homemakers of America, Home Economics Related Occupations, FHA Hero, Students and Advisors to attend the FHA Hero State Leadership Conference and Competitions, April 23rd to 25th, 2015, in Fresno, California. Six and seven, I have the same comment about, even though a trip or something is going to be paid for out of ASB funds or some kind of site funds, the cost needs to be included in the agenda for the board to approve. Both six and seven, there was no cost. This came up before a while back, and I think the principals need to be reminded to remind their people, whatever they're submitting, you must have a cost, like a cost per student and a final cost or not to exceed cost or something, and also, of course, where the money's coming from. That was just a comment. I'm not saying I don't want to approve them this time, but I do want that message to get delivered to the schools. And number G nine, when I read this, it said that each, they wanted to, they're going to distribute the PTA funds because the PTA was dissolved. They want to distribute it equally per student to provide field trips. So I'm, I'm kind of wondering how they are going to do this because that amount of money divided upon by the number of students in the school might be like, what, three or four dollars a piece? Are they each going to have their own little account? How are they, if they, they kind of emphasize they want to distribute it equally per student, and so do we know how they plan on doing that?
May I refer to Jasmine, please? Could you respond?
It's not necessarily equally per students, but to provide study trips for the students of Morris Elementary School because they're going to go on with a PTO rather than a PTA, and these were funds that were left in the PTA funds.
Right. I understand that, but the wording that was in the back of the agenda says equally per student, and that means to me each student in that school is going to get the exact same amount of money.
Right, right. It does interpret that way. But it will be used for study trips, and if they use it equally per student, then it will subsidize, supplement the study trip accounts they already have.
Okay.
All right.
Do we have any more questions regarding these three items? Okay, C none, then do we have a motion to approve item G six, seven, and nine?
Move to approve items G six, seven, and nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, good.
Next up, we go to item K. Discussion action items, and just for clarification, these will not be improved, these will not be approved as a consent, as consent items. These will be read individually and acted upon individually. First item for action, for item K1 is to adopt the resolution number 141558, First Five, San Bernardino, for the 2015 through 16 budget for preschool program. Do we have a motion to approve item K1?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And hearing discussion, go ahead, Ms. O'Kelly.
Well, I'm just wondering, there's obviously going to be a financial gap here because of the budget cut for First Five. I believe our preschool used to be self-sufficient, didn't it?
Yes, but not anymore because of the enrollment being, being, we're working on to bring enrollment at 100% level. We're not there yet. So at present time, we are, we are, our general fund contributions was provided to bring the program at the 100% level.
So, and in other words, the district will be paying or bridging the gap financially for the preschool program?
Preschool, not for First Five. First Five is done by the county, county. So this, this program funded by the county, county First Five, and our district's going to receiving every year.
Right.
The amount, so this program...
But it's going to be short now, so who's going to fill in that gap?
Well, we, they're reduced by $2,000. You can see that. So we're going to adjust the program and run up to the amount of the grant. So meaning we, this has to be self-supported.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve item K1?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on, item K2. Approve the 2015, 2014 through 2015 second interim financial report as presented. And there's a reference K2.1 through 2 on the back of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve item K2?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Do we have any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to ask something.
Okay.
Mr. Islam, those financial reports are not in a manner or a language that is easily digested. I remember two years ago, you gave us a budget report and with a PowerPoint, whatever, very outlined everything, very easy to understand. I think the board would appreciate that, so it's, it makes a little bit more sense to us. On these financial reports, we basically look to see if we got a positive certification, but, you know, we'd like a little more information on the budget.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Appreciate it. We'll get back and give you the, the more detail other than those kind of numbers.
Right, it's all numbers and it's...
I realize it.
That's my kind of reading, though.
Yes, we will provide the detail in a simple format.
That must be very boring.
Keeps me up at night.
Go ahead, thank you.
Just another comment on the certification of the financial report. Sometimes we have to make tough decisions because if we don't get that positive certification, it's good to share with you that we lose our bond rating, and overnight, the interest goes up, interest rate goes up, and it could be a million dollars charged to the district or more. So we have to be real careful when we get the report and it's positive or prior to getting the report, when we get recommendations that we have to stay toe-to-line, this is one of the reasons that we do that, so that we don't end up going backwards.
Good, good point, Mr. Ayala. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have item K3. Approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel. And we have two case numbers. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a separate vote on these two case numbers. We'll start with the first one, first case, 14-15-43. Do we have a motion to, well, first, do we have a motion to approve the item? I apologize.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly, Mr. Martinez. Okay. Now, we'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote for case numbers 14, 15, 14-15-43, starting with Mr. Martinez.
Aye.
Mr. Ayala.
Aye.
Myself will be a no. Mrs. O'Kelly?
Yeah, aye.
Mrs. Walker?
No.
Okay. Motion carries three, two. And then last, case number 14-15-40, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
Myself is an aye. Mrs. O'Kelly?
Aye.
And Ms. Walker?
Aye.
All righty. That brings us to item L, comments from the interim superintendent. Take it away, Mr. Mohamed Islam.
Thank you, President Montes. Couple items I'd like to report tonight. The all elementary school will have open house tomorrow, tomorrow evening, which is March 12, beginning 5. Some of the school has a 6 until 7:30. I send you the schedules on Friday. Please, if you have time, please visit our schools. You'll see the parents, a lot of, you know, children, the parents being, the excitement being, school being open house. I'd like to see you there if you, if you have the time, but again, it's tomorrow. Every elementary school will be have open house tomorrow, beginning 5. Our spring break beginning next week, March 16 through March 27. School will not be in session. Parents will have a break. Students will have a break.
Parents will wish they had a break.
The next items, as a, there was discussions at the last board meeting, concerns about the boardroom expansion project. I want to report this tonight to the, to you, Board and the community. We're not going forward to that project at this time. So that is not an issue, anybody should have concern about that project. That is, that project will not be, will not be coming back, not near future. With that, I thank everyone being here tonight. With that, I thank everyone being here tonight.
Thank you, interim superintendent, Mr. Islam. Next, we'll go to our student board member, Mrs. Angulo.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. On Saturday, I attended, put in on the RITS, and the students are so talented. And it was, it was a really good event, a really good show. It was really, anyone involved in the committee, it was amazing. You guys did great. And also, today for DSEC, we had Ms. Venezuela give us a presentation on the LCAP, on the Local Control Accountability Plan. And it's just, I, we all greatly appreciate that you're keeping us in the loop, and we thank you for that. And I hope you all have a great spring break, and good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Marisol. Next up, we go to board member, Mr. Joe Martinez.
Thank you, President Montez. I'd also like to comment on the RITS. If you missed it, you missed a good one. It's probably the best one I've ever seen. It was entertaining throughout. In my opinion, no lulls at all. Sometimes, there, there are kind of a little dip in, in the entertainment. This time, there really wasn't. I'd like to thank the two ladies on the board for screening, and Joseph Williams for, for screening, and congratulate Nancy O'Kelly on her reigning win in the dancing category.
I'm going to be on Dancing with the Stars, yes.
And it was good. Thank you to the committee members. You work tirelessly behind the scenes, and you don't, don't expect anything. That, that's true community spirit and community giving. Thank you from my heart, from the board. I'm sure we all, all convey that. Frisbee Career Day was great. Most of you know that I'm not a morning person. I stay up nights and read boring numbers. And, and I'm also a closet guitar player. So, I, I love doing that and working on luthery, which is guitar repair. And that, that's what I do. Those are, that's one of my hobbies. Luckily, the wife sleeps at one end, and I make noise at the other end. And she's very tolerable, toler, she's very tolerant of me, and has been for forty-five years. Thank you, sweets. She told me something that I have not been able to follow up on, but that the Common Core was suspended, starting for one year. That it was basically, we don't have to start it on time next year. That it's held back for one more year. Heard it in the news in passing, so we'll probably get more information about that. If, if nothing else, I'll have to wonder why she's given me, you know, information that she was snoring during, during that part. Other than that, Mr. Montez, thanks for running a good meeting. You're getting better at it, and, and they are good.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Thank you. I appreciate it. We're trying, we're trying. I'm looking at the time clock over there. It says eight oh five, and I'm in shock, really. But, but again, it's not the goal of doing, to do them really fast, just try to be efficient. So, with that, Mr. Yalla, would you like to give your board report?
Sure. Thank you, President Montez, and good evening, staff and community. Always try to share little words of wisdom or something that will benefit kids and parents and our community. I think, I've said this before, but perhaps maybe not everybody's heard it, but, you know, we have kids that are incorrigible, we have kids that won't behave, we have kids that'll act up. I have grandkids that can define what I just mentioned there, you know, and we're challenged with them. So, what do we do with these kids? Well, I don't think anybody has the exact science on what to do with these kids. But if you go to the jails and you ask one question, what do you think that question would be to find out why a lot of those young people are incarcerated? And the answer to that question would be, what happened to you at age twelve? And people say, well, why age twelve? Well, that's kind of the age of puberty. And when kids reach that age, they're very volatile. They're easily persuaded. A lot of them can't sit in a chair for very long. They're very active. And if they're traumatized in any way, their body chemistry, it's called serotonin. Sound like a doctor up here, but I'm not. And it, it gets depleted. And when it gets depleted, a lot of our kids, they're vulnerable to making poor choices. So, if you're a parent and you're, you have a troubled child, yelling at them is not going to help. In fact, everyone else is yelling at them where they're at. So, when they come home, you hug them, you love them, you feed them, you give them comfort. My mother gave me unconditional love. She says, "Son, what, whatever you want to do, I just want you to be happy. You don't have to do anything to impress me." And I know sometimes, you know, if you're on the sidelines and your child's playing a sport, you want them to be the top person in that endeavor. But, you know, they're there playing, and they're alive and they're breathing. And so, you know, I'm using my time right now to try to encourage people to try to be a little more understanding, a little more patient. Don't be so short with your kids. And then, I will close on this one issue. I got one comment on something else. But I will say that, you know, our kids are not impressed with how much we know. I think you know what they're impressed by, and that's how much we care. And we have a lot of caring people here. I see them every time we come to a board meeting. And with that being said, I want to throw a plug in for the Rialto Unified School District Golf League. It will start March nineteenth. I hope Tom is there. Find a partner. I'm bringing my wife out. We're going to try not to come in last. And then, when we do get a partner or somebody plays with us, if, if we're too slow for you, just go ahead and go, no, no, no problem. I hope Mr. Silva comes out. He's a golfer. That's five o'clock on Thursday. I don't want to put you on the spot. I know you're a businessman. But if you can do it, it's only nine holes. And what an opportunity to let our hair down and just relax a little bit and get to know each other a little better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Yalla. Next, we go to our board clerk, Ms. Deana Walker.
Thank you. Just really quick, I'm looking at the time, too. I'm like, oh, my God, I'm going to be home, hopefully, but yeah. So, just to kind of go back to the student comment who on, on the, on the board about Eisenhower going to two lunches and the, you know, pros and cons of that. I just, it just made me go back to the days when I was in tenth grade. I went from high, from middle school to high school, tenth grade at that time, back in the eighties. And they had two lunches, my sophomore year, they had two lunches. And people on one track who were college-bound, they had the first lunch. And everybody else had the second lunch, and all my friends had the second lunch. And by the end of my tenth grade year, I had passed, out of my second semester, passed only five classes out of six, because I chose to go to the lunch with my, with my friends. And that really was, that was my decision, because all of my friends all went to, I would go to their class, their PE class at third period or fourth period. That was right before lunch. And that was a whole scenario. And at the end of, in June, I ended up passing one out of six classes. But it was a socialization, it only because all of my friends and everything. And that was a bigger factor for me, even though my college-bound aspirations, you know. So, just in thinking about that, and I'm glad to see that the students actually thought it out enough to do a survey and to get input and feedback to get, to provide the district impact. Because what are the reasons why we are changing that? And I'm hoping that it's not just because less kids are paying for lunch at a certain, you know, during that lunch period. That, that should not be the reasons why we impact the lives and the engagement of students on campuses. Not for that. So, just, just make sure that we're, do our due diligence, too, about our reasoning for wanting to change, and that we take into consideration how it impacts the students as well. So, that, that's the first thing. Second thing is, LCAP meetings, I, I am, you know, kind of disappointed to hear that we had a low, low turnout at our LCAP meetings on this past week. I wish I could have been there at least to, you know, see and, and see for myself what that engagement was, or participation. But I had a full schedule this week. And one of those parts of it was attending the unconscious bias training with the teachers and some other members of our district, which was very enlightening. So, going back to LCAP, definitely, as before we submit our final draft, and we do have another committee meeting to see our final draft of LCAP, that we do put more time and energy in diversifying how we publicize those meetings, so that we do have an opportunity for more people to be involved and have input. And that we schedule the meeting so that we don't talk, meaning our administration doesn't talk all the way through it, not to have the community to have input. So, point-taking community, letting us know that, and REA as well. And then, just to move to the unconscious bias training. Very enlightening, those two days to learn and, and about our own biases and things of that sort, to help us be better interacting, not only with our students, but also with our, our own staff, because it is a different world than even when I grew up. So that we're, we are conscious about what we do and the things that are unconsciously, how we're ingrained and brought up, and kind of what we do to help to better engage and serve our students and as well as our staff. I'm hoping that our district does allow another opportunity, several other opportunities, so that more staff can actually participate in the training. So, I know that'll be something that you all will work out with REA and, and the other, other employees in the district. And then, lastly, the RITS. Yes, the RITS was, oh, my God, that was my first time ever going. And I am so embarrassed, because yes, I got embarrassed by getting turned out by my friend. Nancy O'Kelly, I just thought we were going up there to talk about our time as judges. And I, so I got hoodwinked into that and realized that I'm supposed to be dancing. And if had I known that, I wouldn't have wore heels, and I would have lost twenty pounds. It was a great day. And I just want to say thank you to the classified employees certificate, everybody who participated in that, because it was really classy. And we walked in and we saw the decorations on the walls, the light, everything, from the food, even just, I mean, every, the ROTC kids, I mean, you know, walking in the VIP entrance, they, you know, stood up and put their, I guess their, whatever they put up and made the, you know. And I'm thinking, why are they doing that? Is somebody behind me? Like, you know, is somebody coming that I don't know about? And it was all for the VIP entrance. And just that formality, the regalness of the whole event. Again, accolades to the entire team that put that together, because it was phenomenal. And I say that to say, because after that, this week, I've had, on two different occasions, two different places, people come up to me and say, "I attended the RITS. You guys did such a good job." And they were thanking me like I did it. I was like, oh, yeah. But yeah, two different occasions. So, again, thank you for everybody who participated in that. That is really a pearl, you know, in our necklace for Rialto. So, continue the good job. Looking forward to see everybody after, oh, we still won't be after spring break, but at the end of the month, next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, last but not least, here I go, and unfortunately. I'm so sorry. I am so sorry.
I am not a woman who will be ignored, Mr. Montez.
Her dancing says it all.
I apologize, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly. On, now on next to our vice president, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly.
Thank you. Well, first, I have to share my exciting personal news, which many of you know already. But yesterday, I became the proud grandma yet again of a ten-pound, five-ounce baby boy, twenty-three inches long. Yes. We come from good, good bones. That was very exciting, and he's absolutely beautiful. And I'm going over to see him again when we, when we leave here. Okay, well, I've been busy. I attended the Rialto High School WASK reception at the beginning of their WASK visitation, and the report of findings at the end. And I'm very proud to say that the WASK visitation team was impressed with Rialto High School, because they probably meant Marisol, because she's from Rialto High School, and their staff and their students. They were all amazed at the parent support and the interact, their interaction on the campus. So, Rialto High, kudos to you. Job well done. Keep it up. I also attended Trap Elementary School's fiftieth anniversary. I want to give a big shout out to Principal Roxanne Dominguez and her staff for a wonderful event. My own kids attended Trap, so Trap is very near and dear to my heart. And I had not seen many of the people that were there for many years. They've retired and moved on, and it was just really great to, to see them again. On Saturday, I attended Mayor Deborah Robertson's event, the ninth annual, The State of Women. This event has grown every year. There were probably about five hundred, five hundred fifty people there. We were in a big warehouse down on baseline. It was all decorated nice and whatever. Very classy event, very meaningful and purposeful. Saturday night, I was at the RITS. And, you know, for those of you who don't know, this is a, a show that displays our students' talents in the performing arts. I have to say, my own son is a musician, and his career is really on the rise. And he works at Apple to pay the bills, but he's, he's heading, I think he's actually going to be able to sustain himself with his music. He's a jazz musician, plays all the saxophones and everything else. And, but that's in his soul. It's in his blood. So, Russell, what you said tonight hit home. What if he had not had those opportunities? You know, amazing. So, I really love the RITS. I have attended the RITS since it began, many, many years ago, and have loved it every year. The funds raised from the RITS are distributed to our performing arts teachers and classes so that they can do special things with their children. The one thing I would like to say, as many years as I've attended the RITS, I know there's some schools in the district that have never had been represented. So, I want a goal for next year, Saidah, that we have at least one act from every school try out. Okay, to make, and we might have to nudge the principals a little bit to make sure that happens. But I really think there's, we have, we see all the hidden talent we have out there, and sometimes it just gets overlooked because, you know, we haven't stressed it enough. Monday night, I attended a CSBA workshop on effective boardmanship, which is very good. Very worthwhile. I learned a lot. We had a lot of fun. And look forward to the next one I'm going to go to. And regarding lunches at Eisenhower, your name is Blaze? Blaze, you weren't there when I was principal, but I used to be the principal of Eisenhower. So Eisenhower is also near and dear to my heart. I, you know, most of the reasons for two lunches is the number of students in the school and safety, especially at the high school level. I think they thought, if you have three thousand kids out at one lunch, and any kind of trouble starts, that can, that can escalate. But from what I understand, Eisenhower, they went to one lunch, and they have not had those problems at all, right? And as a former administrator at Eisenhower, I can tell you what, truancy with two lunches is rampant. If they have two, they all, everybody has friends at the other lunch. So, they ditch that class and meet up with their friends, and they just take two lunches. And tracking that down with, when you have close to three thousand students is very difficult to keep on top of. So, if, at all, I hope you can keep your single lunch, because it seems to be working there. You've got the size campus that it works at. The other thing I want to bring up, Mr. Islam, and I brought this up before. I have had students from each of the high schools complain about the food. Something's got to be done. And they're, you're absolutely right. If they're not buying the lunch, it's probably because they don't like the food. So, we need to get with your nutrition services. Maybe I want to get some kids from each of the high schools to meet with them and tell them what their complaints are, and see if we can fix this.
Mr. Kelly, yes, we are working on it. And we heard from the students, GSEC students, I listened to their concern that students. And we heard from the students, GSEC students, I listened to their concern that students do not enjoy the quality, the food we serve. So we have to, we are going to bring your report back to you once we collect the feedback from the students, what type of food they like to have. And of course, we have to follow the nutrition guidelines and the state guidelines.
I understand that. But the food we got at like the RITS and some school functions, which is yummy, this is not what the kids are getting. And it's nutritionally sound, especially that tuxedo moose cake. But they can, I think we can do better.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, and that, I guess, is all I have for tonight. Thank you and you guys have a wonderful night, wonderful spring break. Hope you enjoy it and we'll see you back here in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Montez, may I clarify this single lunch in Eisenhower? This is all audit funding, state auditors came, reviewed our program. I sent you the Friday as a board, I did not receive the report. I have a single page report, there's two findings, this is one of the major findings by the state. Because their findings, going to the Eisenhower School comparing with other high schools whom they served to lunch and they're saying, but because of Eisenhower serving one lunch, we are participation is not as high as it should be. And they also expressed a concern of the length of time we, for the students to eat, meaning they're not given enough time to eat. Many students are throwing their food in the trash. So this is an audit finding, so I will bring it to you.
Again, I beg to differ. You have 45 minutes for lunch, right? Yes, they have a longer lunch period.
You're correct. By the time you serve the last person standing in the lunch line, don't have time for eat.
I too have, well, first of all, let's give Ms. Nancy O'Kelly a round of applause for her wonderful board report.
Are you trying to shut me out?
No, 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 no. Regarding the school lunch, regarding the dual lunches, I just also want to say that I hear the students loud and clear. I hear the staff that are in support of it loud and clear. But I do want to emphasize that if the district and if the school decides to keep one lunch as opposed to two, you gotta, we, they, the students have to be spoken to and reminded that if they want to keep a one, a single lunch program as opposed to two lunches, then they need to keep in mind that if any fights ever break out, that can be very dangerous when you have all those students out at the same time. Let me just give you guys an example. I went to A.B. Miller High School in the 90s. And when I was over there, they, a fight broke out, not during lunch, but during assemblies, during the mass high school assemblies. Half of the school, because not all the school would fit in the gymnasium, half the school would participate in the first assembly or pep rally. And then as that, as that half of the school exited out one side back to their classes, at the same time, the other half of the school would exit their classes and enter at the same time. So one group would be exiting, the other group would be entering, and they had two lunches over there for the same reason. But they had the assemblies back to back. Well, they had to change that. They had to wait for the first half to go to class before they released the second half. And let me tell you why. Because fight, one fight broke out and then all of a sudden, a bunch of fights broke out. And the students that were in the first pep rally and the students that were going to the second pep rally, they all, not everyone was involved, but there were so many students out, safety and security was overwhelmed. Teachers were overwhelmed. How can you, how can you control a couple thousand students? You know, so they changed that, that part for that reason. Now, the 90s were a little different times than, you know, the early 2000s and then now, you know, we're in the teens. But we have to keep in mind, the ultimate, the ultimate goal of every district principal as a leader of the school is the safety of the children, the safety of the school in general. So these are things we need to weigh out very carefully. I understand the clubs, it's more convenient for everybody. You know, the boyfriend doesn't have to ditch to the girlfriend's lunch and vice versa. Or the friends don't have to, you know, be separated by different lunches. But at the end of the day, we need to analyze what works best. I have had complaints about children or students not being able to have enough time to eat because the lunch lines are so long. Now, maybe that can be, maybe that can be taken care of by creating more lunch lines. I don't know, but I think this is something, especially if the state has weighed in and audited and given some suggestions and findings. We have to analyze this and really weigh the pros and cons in general for what's best for everyone and for what's the safest for everyone. But with that said, I do appreciate Mrs. Blaze, Ms. Blaze Ray coming here tonight to share the feedback from the students. With that said, I'm going to go try to streamline through this stuff because I got a lot to talk about. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Buenas noches, bienvenidos. And the second thing I'd like to discuss was, well, just mention, I had the honor of attending the Traps Elementary's 50th anniversary last week. Mr. Martinez was there, Ms. O'Kelly was there. And then we had also earlier that day gone to the WASC reception, Mr. Martinez and Ms. O'Kelly and myself at Rialto High School. Kudos to both schools. Trap Elementary, I found out a lot of history about Trap. They used to be the Trap Rats.
Not rats, mice.
Oh, Trap Mice?
My children were mice.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My children were not rats.
They used to be the Trap Mouses and the Mouse Trap and now they're, then at one point, they decided to change to the Trap Tigers.
Timberwolves.
Timberwolves, I'm sorry. The Trap Timberwolves.
It's Rialto Middle School Tigers.
And I mean, they gave a, they gave a presentation, it was awesome, learned a lot. No, no, one of the things I want to say is a former employee, longtime employee there, I forgot her name, I didn't write it down, but she gave a sort of like a little speech poem called "I Remember When."
Oh, yes.
And she talked about how, you know, in the big, back in the days before smoking was outlawed, employees used to smoke in the office or in the break room and laws started changing and cars had to drive out, you know, to go smoke cigarettes for those who smoke. And she started saying all these things about "I remember when," right? And she said, 50 years from now, someone else will be reading "I Remember When" and they'll be talking about all the changes that you guys are going to be going through. I thought that was really, really interesting. The other thing I wanted to mention also, let's give a round of applause to Saeda Joffrey and Ricardo Carlos also. And you guys know why, those of you guys know why, for putting on the RITS. You know, big kudos to the RITS Gala Committee also. They do an awesome job. I know it would, the event wouldn't have been possible without the RITS Committee. I just wanted to also recognize Saeda and Ricardo Carlos for all of the hard work that they do, working behind, in and behind the scenes. We had again, for those of you who listen to rock and roll music on the radio, we had KCal, Disc Jockey, Jimbo. Jimbo from a morning show I'm not going to mention, but it's a very funny, very funny morning show and very funny guy and he did an awesome job. And all of the students performed very well. I want to give special thanks to the mothers. The first opening act, there was parents that performed with their sons. The moms danced with their sons and it was really beautiful to see the parents being able to perform. I don't know if it's the first time, it's the first time I've seen...
First time we had parents.
The parents, mothers were able to perform with their sons, students of our schools, opening there for the RITS Gala. That was very beautiful. And Ms. Silva's correct, you know, big kudos to classified staff for all their hard work. The ROTC and the Junior Navy, wasn't that awesome? Them meeting, greeting everybody at the red carpet with the swords up in the air. I was hoping it just wasn't going to come down on anybody, you know, but that was very elegant, you know, to have a red carpet and it was a really nice event for those that were able to attend. I do want to also thank Mr. Silva for his support in expanding the VAPA, the Visual Arts and Performing Arts Program in our district. I believe currently we only have it at one elementary school, Henry Elementary School. But it is definitely something we should expand to all of our elementary schools. We just got to find a way to come up with the funding, but I'm sure that there's grants out there available. I'm sure there's ways of looking, looking for ways to raise those funds and bring those funds to this district for that program. I know there's been grants in the past that they've used for that specific program. And it would be, the RITS is a wonderful example of why we should expand the visual and performing arts. And last but not least, I want to thank all the students that participated. I like the kid that kept combing his hair like that with the hand and doing the whole rockabilly, rock and roll thing. That was, that was awesome. I couldn't understand a thing he was saying, but I know he was singing with his heart. And he was so, he was so little, he was like probably, he looked like five years old, I'm not sure. But man, he gave a performance and if I'm mistaken, I think that's the one that gave an autograph to Mr. Fletcher. So that was, that was awesome, it was really, really nice. I'd like to suggest that we record those, video recorded? Oh, great. We need to give that to, oh, great, we need to give that to the Rialto City Channel so they can air it. Oh, great. You're on it, thank you.
We should also sell them to the parents.
Oh, okay. We should offer those, we should offer those for sale and to raise funds for the program itself. I think there's a lot of, I don't, I wouldn't mind buying a copy of, you know, me busting some moves, but unfortunately, I was outperformed by, by Ms. O'Kelly here and she won the big prize of a whole whopping $3.
Yeah, yeah, last year I won a basket, so what happened this year? I get three bucks.
So again, big kudos to the ROTC instructor and the Junior Navy and everybody, all the students out there that made it possible. And we also want to thank our safety and security, you know, for keeping us safe everywhere, you know, at any time. They're always there to answer the call. I want to thank also the safety and security team, not just here at the district meetings, but also at, you know, at the special events at the school sites. Safety and security has really done an awesome job. And we also should give some recognition to our safety and security chief, Mr. Gordon Leary, for doing a wonderful job. I want to talk about the LCAP meetings. I want to piggyback on some of the comments that were made. I too believe that we could do a better job in advertising or informing the community about the LCAP meetings. I think part of the problem is explaining what LCAP stands for and what it means and what it is. A lot of people still don't really, haven't really soaked it up, especially, you know, people in the community that hardly have interactions, interactions with the district. But we should definitely do, try to reach out to even the Spanish speaking parents, you know, everyone regarding the LCAP to inform if we have to have meetings in Spanish for some of our parents. I don't see a problem with that, you know, and then even if we need to advertise on the Rialto Record, El Chicano and all the other local newspapers and on the Channel 3 cable channel there with the city of Rialto, we should definitely do at least another attempt at getting more feedback from the community before we turn in that final draft for the LCAP. Regarding the unconscious, unconscious bias training, I just want to thank the California Teachers Association and REA for offering that type of training for our staff here. You know, if you guys recall, CTA and REA offered to do this out of their own pocket, out of their own free will to help us get through some difficult times that we were going through, particularly last year regarding, you know, possible insensitivity-ness. So also I want to talk about the California Public Records Requests. I want to make sure that we're doing everything possible to answer any public records requests. Most, for those of you who don't know, California Public Records Request Act obligates public agencies like ours to release public documents to the public upon their request during a certain amount of timeframe. And when requests are made, most of them are just general public requests for information. We need to come up with a way to streamline any public records requests that come through so that they're, so that it's efficient and they're giving the information or the documents that are appropriate in a timely manner. Any public records requests that are requested, that are confidential personnel, that have personnel confidential information or attorney-client privileged, those types of documents, we need to, I'd like for staff to look at coming up with a way to, for the board to analyze, the district to analyze those types of requests and give responses as soon as possible in regards to what can, what can and can't be given in either in its entirety or in a redacted form, or just can't be given outright. But we need to come up with a way to streamline that so we don't have some of the issues that we had in the previous years. But we have been, we have made huge improvements in that area. I just want to say real quick before I wrap it up that we're a million times, I think a million times better today than we were whenever, any other, any other, at any other time in our district. As far as just my personal opinion, I think we've come a long way, I think we're doing a lot of good things. Staff, you know, is really coming through on shining for a lot of good reasons. The students are learning, the students are happy about being at school. Marisol's happy as a student, you know. The students are, you know, feel welcome here to come and share their ideas with the board. And I just want, want to give a big kudos to, to the whole district really and to all the staff and all the people that make this district, you know, a learning institution for our kids. Because, you know, sometimes we get asked about this or about that, about, you know, how are you guys doing things different? We want to do things different, we want, we want to do things better. And we are, and I want to thank, and, you know, we should give some thanks and recognition also to interim superintendent, Mr. Islam, for helping us through some very difficult times and getting us to where we're at today. Regarding special ed, I want to thank the parents of special ed for constantly being involved, you know, and being engaged. We do take your comments and your suggestions and your ideas. We do take them serious and we appreciate you coming here tonight to recognize some of our hardworking staff here and for thanking the board and thanking the district for making improvements. And we do know we have a lot of work to do, but thank you for coming here tonight and sharing, sharing your praise tonight. Muchas gracias. Last but not least, I just want to say, I'm not going to be here the next board meeting, I'm going on vacation. I forgot to look up that we were going to have a school board meeting during spring break. So my vacation was planned during spring break. Unfortunately, we have a board meeting during spring break, which will be the 25th. For, for those who don't know, we'll be taking, students will be on spring break from the 17th to the 28th? The 16th to the 20, from the 16th? Through the 27th. And, and we have a board meeting on the 25th. So for those employees who wanted to go on vacation for the full two weeks, I'm sorry to report you're going to have to come to a school board meeting on the 25th. But we, it's too late to do anything about it this time. But we can look at next year, I believe it was, it was brought to our attention that next school year, we have a board meeting in the middle of spring break. Next year, we have one week of spring break instead of two. And there's a board meeting in the middle of that spring break. We should really consider even, either doing a back-to-back or changing that board meeting in the middle of that spring break in case staff members, anybody wants to take a vacation, you know, for that. So let's bring that back. And with that, thank you and have a happy spring break. Muchas gracias.
Move to Jared.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.